Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Isaac. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Toleme.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corrin being present, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2000, or excuse me, August 3rd, 2006?
So moved.
Is there a second on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the bills? Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills dated August 17th, 2006 for $1,203,727.86.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Shockey?
Yes, a couple of things. On page one. The accent images, lighted balloons, weren't those supposed to be picked up by the sponsors? Or are we paying for it and then they're picking it up?
Mr. Williams?
Yes, that was picked up by the sponsors. We're, we, we did collect the funding for those.
Okay, thank you. Second one is the, just for the public knowledge, there's Allied Waste Services, garbage service, talking about scavenger yard waste and recycling. Is that a monthly bill?
Mr. Williams?
That's correct.
Okay, just so the public knows, because we're talking about a tax referendum, that bill is for one month, $57,645. So even though we're a, a, a community of only, a little over 13,000 people, it costs an awful lot of money to pick up that garbage. And on page four, Commonwealth Edison, we have to pay them $25 for the electricity, for light service and so forth in town. And the DuPage Water Commission, $82,000 we're paying for the water that we get, for the Chicago Clean Water. So, you know, when, when people say, "What are you doing with all that money? And why do you need a tax referendum?", they need to understand that we do have big, big bills to pay. The last one is on page...
Just one correction before you go on. I wish my ComEd bill was 25 bucks. The monthly ComEd bill for the city of Wooddale, $25,656.89.
Didn't I say that?
You said 25 dollars.
Oh.
We wish.
I meant 25,000.
We wish.
25,000. 25,000 for that, and 82,000 for the water, and 57,000 for the waste. There is one other I'd like to question, though, on, on page two. The James Benus Associates. We've talked about this for a long time, and I'd like to have it put on the agenda for as soon as possible. I understand that we can make a motion to eliminate Benus Associates from our engineering. We've been talking about it and talking about it, so I'd like to bring it up as a topic to be voted on, whatever committee that should go to.
I'm interpreting that as a motion to decertify them as a qualified engineer for the city of Wooddale.
Exactly.
I would think that would be on Public Works Committee. Yeah, add that to a future agenda.
Alderman Suback?
Sure, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or corrections regarding the bill? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Toleme?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hearing none. I do not have any written communiques. Under mayor's report, we've had a request from Wooddale Place LLC to do a preliminary presentation and get some feedback from the city council regarding the project.
Mr. Breen?
And Mr. Breen, before you get started, you understand that this is just a presentation that the city council has, has done in the past for developers where we're not bound by any opinions we're giving you. We're just, you're just looking for feedback in order to save on long-term costs for developers and to get our opinions as a proposal, correct?
Yes, correct.
As to our proposed development, and hopefully your support. With me this evening are the principals of the company, who are the owners and will be the developers, Gene, Genevenco, Mike Panalera, and Leo Bakara. They will be actually doing the construction and are the owners of this project. I have just tendered to you, and I know we've put in your packages earlier, a preliminary plan consisting of our site plan, front elevation landscaping plan, along with a fact sheet with regard thereto. Just briefly, the property that we are looking to develop is, contains 25 units or apartment units. It's four buildings and it's two-story. And it's made, made up of 16 one-bedrooms, three three-bedrooms, and six two-bedrooms. The property is currently zoned R8 multifamily, and it's located just east of Wooddale Road, south of Irving, and just south of the railroad tracks on the south-sided division. It contains almost an acre, being 40,381 square feet. The property is surrounded on the southeast and west by R8 multi-unit residential zoning districts. Just to the north of it, there is R4, and then just north of that is a B1 local retail business district. My client is proposing, if we get our, if we get your approval and support, to demolish the existing apartment complex and to construct around a seven-story condominium building similar to the site plan that we have tendered in the elevation, which would consist of 48 units. The construction would be brick and masonry with concrete floors. The first floor in the basement of the project would provide for inside parking. You'll note that there's outside parking also. The additional floors would be for the condo units. The units would consist of two bedrooms and two bedrooms with dens. The size of those units would vary from 1,200 to 1,600 square feet, and the sales prices would range from an anticipated sales range of $275,000 or $80,000 to $380,000. All units would be privately owned. I have discussed briefly with staff the location of this property, and it's my understanding that it is currently in your proposed town square redevelopment area. I know that we do not have any standards or guidelines as to yet formalized by the city, but I understand that that is in the process. My client's request for variations as to height and density, however, would be similar to other communities' town-centered developments, and I believe that you will agree with me this evening from a conceptual standpoint that the 25-unit apartment building is reaching the end or has reached the end of its economical life and is certainly not consistent with a redevelopment of town center. However, I would point out to you that it is a viable and economic asset, and it does generate substantial income, and therefore, the variations that we are requesting are absolutely necessary to make this a viable project in the future. In analyzing our proposal, our redevelopment proposal, I believe that there's no question that is far more appealing or aesthetically pleasing than the existing apartments, and it certainly is consistent with other redevelopment projects in surrounding communities. I believe that it is consistent with the proposals that I have seen when I've been here for redevelopment studies that you have solicited, and there's no question that the project would create additional revenues. I also believe that the additional residents that the units would create would help support future commercial, which is the goal of any town center. We are here this evening to solicit your support, but also your evaluations and suggestions with regard to our proposed proposal. And again, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come before you and get at least a preliminary or conceptual approval or comments as to this development. Thank you.
Alderman Suback?
How many apartment units are, would you be eliminating with the replacement? The 48 units that are going to be proposed?
Well, there'd actually be an addition. There's 25 units that exist on the site today. They're consisting of four two-story buildings. We're proposing 48.
In those 25 rental units now, do you know what? There's our one-bedroom or two-bedroom units?
I believe that there are 16 one-bedrooms, three three-bedrooms, and six two-bedrooms currently.
My concern is going to be, is the increase in the density. That is a, somewhat of a primary intersection now. I know we have to have our police there for about hour and a half a day, probably directing traffic in and out of there. That being said, I think it's a positive that we are eliminating those apartment buildings, as you're right, they are kind of at the end of their useful life. But again, the owner of those buildings is going to win a certain amount of money for those because they're probably 100% occupied.
It is 100% occupied currently.
My other concern, because this does start to butt closer to existing single-family residential, is the height. When we approved a six-floor for the Gagliano project along Irving Park Road, that went up to six floors. It's not done yet, so I don't think anybody up here really realizes how tall that will be. But that had the retail aspect of the first floor. So personally, my biggest concerns will be the height of it, and also the number of the units that the developer is proposing, and the traffic that it would put into that area. So if somewhere those numbers could come down, obviously, it's going to be more than 25 units. I don't know what the number is, but somewhere, I think the number should be worked out where it's not 48.
Alderman Toleme?
My question is, how, how many units per floor?
Eight. Eight units per floor.
Okay.
The first floor in the basement would be for parking, as I indicated, and then there are six additional floors above that.
Okay. I, I would just like to echo, I mean, I know, I kind of mentioned this to you outside, but I kind of like to echo what Alderman Suback just stated. That area already has a problem, you know, with the egress and...
Ingress and egress.
Egress, right. Because we do have, that's the only way into our train station currently today. And, I mean, if we're going to add additional people into that area, I mean, that is concerned. The other concern I have is the height of the building. I've never been a proponent of the real tall buildings in the city. The only reason we did allow Gagliano that project with the six floors is because of where it's located. It's right next to railroad tracks. It's on the south side of Irving Park Road. There is no residential in that area. So, you know, from my perspective, that was, it's not a bad area to build. But he, originally, he wanted like eight, and said, you know, no way. So I have a real issue, you know, with, with the height of the building. I'm not sure what the, what the appropriate height would be or could be. You know, in my opinion, maybe four, but that's me. You know, maybe there's a way you can, you can do your parking underground as opposed to in the first level, which could give you for, you know, for your, your actual, for your, for your buildings or for your...
One of the problems in any one of these situations is that there isn't existing, even though I've indicated that it is our belief that it's reaching its, end of its economical value, obviously, it is 100% rented and is a viable asset. So all of these issues must be weighed. I believe that we could obtain a traffic study, and if there was something that we could do that would help the traffic, we would certainly consider doing that as it would relate to that, and we will submit you a traffic study and address any issues as to traffic, and we'll work with staff to have them tender to us any issues that they believe exist there. From the economics, I guess the question would be, and I don't know how to work with, with my, with my client and with the village, as to a height scenario. We will, of course, address your concerns as to the height and to the floors, and maybe either come back with certain suggestions or requests, or alternatively, proceed with the normal channels and then come before you. But we are looking for your support with regard to this. So if you've got comments as to what would be acceptable, and I know, you have indicated maybe four.
Can I just, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Breen, again, I, I think I just want to emphasize, I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, like going with four, because you do have, as Alderman, you know, Soback said, you have...
Suback.
Suback.
Sorry.
Soback, whatever your name is.
A little bit older than I was, but...
Whatever. Anyway, the point I'm trying to make is that you do have, you know, residential right behind this. Okay? And to take it much higher than that, I mean, I'm not real thrilled with that. So I, what I would suggest is like looking at four floors, and then seriously looking at, can you do parking, you know, underground parking in the building? And make that first floor instead of parking, can you make that also, you know, units? Because if you can make that units, then you're only eliminating, what? You said there were 16 per, per unit, right?
Eight per floor.
Or eight per floor? So then you'd only be eliminating ultimately, what, 16?
If that economically works, and I guess that becomes the question, but we will address it and hopefully come back before you.
Okay.
Mr. Breen, have you looked at acquiring the frontage on Wooddale Road and making that into one?
We have attempted to do so, and it has been frugal. Is that correct, John? We have attempted to do that, and it was very frugal, from my understanding.
Alderman Coles?
I think we all agreed on the council here that no apartments would go higher than five floors. I think we did that two years ago, when they were starting to come in, when they wanted to build their own commercial in Wooddale Road. I think we said five floors, and that was the limit. I also talked to the fire department Saturday, and they do have equipment that will go up to eight to nine floors, but it's kind of tricky when they get up that high. That's what the guy said, and I talked to him. So he says five floors would be ideal.
Okay.
So...
Not, not to debate it, but I, I have been informed, and I did find it in your PUD for R8, I believe you can go up to 150 feet, but, but that would be a PUD. I'd just point that out.
I talked to the man Saturday.
I understand.
All right? He says whenever you get over five feet, five stories up, he says it gets kind of weary up there. And I think we have a fireman on the board that would agree with me.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. You know, with the height, I'm not as concerned about the height. If you took five floors and you had condos on those five floors, as long as that bottom floor was, was commercial, and we were able to have some shops there, and it is right by the train station, general concept, you know, I would be okay with that. And with respect to the design, I'd like to see a little more detail on the face of this picture. It, it looks like, almost like a brick wall to me. I'm, I'm not liking it as much.
Sir?
Thank you.
You're going to need to go to the podium, because we do rebroadcast for the citizens, so...
John, you want to...
Unfortunately, the people at home may have not. So if you could respond again to the Alderman's question?
No, we didn't complete 100% the rendering yet. There is a lot more detail, a lot more brickwork, architectural brickwork that will be added to it. A lot more.
The intent this evening was to get your comments, and then hopefully we can put those comments to paper and come back and present it to you, and hopefully get your approval and support.
Alderman Wesley?
I think my whole concern is, I agree with Joe, it is very, the environment itself in this town, there is a concern of a height on that building. I think we need to look at the height. I agree with the, I think it's going to be a traffic nightmare there with this many. The other thing that I like to ask is, where is the water runoff going to go in, in the storage for?
It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, that we are exempt because we're less than an acre on the site. So it would have to be engineered.
You're correct insofar as it's less than an acre detention. It's an onsite detention, it's not required. But I do know what you're getting at, Alderman. It's where the site runoff stormwater will go. And Alderman Wesley, correct me if I'm wrong, is concerned about the adjoining properties and citizens in that area.
So my concern is, where's that runoff going to go?
My understanding is, from just a preliminary view of it, we, it can be engineered properly to fit all of your ordinances, and prior to the time that we are presenting this, this evening, we're really looking not for an engineering. We will address that concern with the final engineering or the engineering. Tonight, we were more interested in your conceptual as to the plan itself and for the density.
Alderman Suback?
With respect to, I respectfully disagree with Alderman Winger on the retail. I, I would rather make sure that the retail at Gagliano gets filled up first. And I, I think a retail, it's already a traffic problem over here, that actually adding retail might cause more of a traffic problem. The Gagliano site was off the Irving Park Road, so I think there's better access, not great, but better access for retail to get in and out. On the height issue, I don't think there's a magic number for me with respect to how many. Six is too high, definitely, but if it's going to be a four-story box, that's not as appealing as maybe taller with more aesthetics added. So I, I don't think it's hard as fast, as Dave said, four stories is going to get approved. I'm more interested in what the aesthetics are going to look for the building. Yeah. And the other issue is, I, I know our ordinance is somewhat cockeyed with respect to the amount of parking that's required. I wouldn't want to overburden this developer with parking. I mean, currently, right now, we have adequate parking at our train station. If there are two spaces per unit, I'd rather have additional green space there. I don't want to have a, a large parking lot over there where now people using the train station start parking over here and not using the train station lot, not paying the monthly fees like they should be doing. So I wouldn't want to overburden the developer with too much parking requirements. Just making sure there's probably, you know, two per unit, and then so many of guest parking, that would be adequate for me.
Alderman Shockey?
I think I have to go back to what Alderman Coles said. I think five stories overall is plenty, and I'm just wondering, is there any, any engineering problem with having two levels of parking underground?
John, if you want to address that area?
No, sir, there isn't. I'm currently building one right now in Skokie that has two levels of parking. One is surface, another one going underneath. If you're talking about going additionally, down farther...
Right.
Oh, yeah, it gets extremely costly and expensive. The further, the further you go down, the sheeting, concrete, and everything else with the engineering, it does get quite expensive.
Because I was just, I was hoping that it wouldn't be that expensive, because then you could have five floors of residence and still be within what we've talked about in the past as being our limit. So it'd be economically feasible.
Alderman Toleme?
Alderman Shockey just brought up a good point that I'd like to kind of expand on a little bit. Going down two layers, you know, under the ground for parking, I know, is going to, is really expensive. You said you're doing a building in Skokie, though, right? What, first level is parking, and then, and then an underground parking below there? Correct?
The one in Skokie that I'm doing, I have one ground, underground parking...
Right. And then one at ground level?
Parking with retail, and then six floors above it.
Okay. What if, and I'm just going to throw this out to you guys, what if, okay, you were able to do that, one underground, one at street level, okay? Would that not give you additional space on the property so that you could actually expand the building, to put more units into the building?
If, if you turn to sheet, I think maybe everybody's, there is two. We do have two levels of parking now in the building.
You do?
Yes.
Which one am I missing? What am I missing?
Oh, you're missing...
I'm not sure it clearly states that.
Yeah. If you look at the, the division side where you're coming in to the building, where you have in and out, entrance and exit, that would be considered the first floor. And if you go along the public alley where the circular radius is, off to...
Just to clarify, one level of parking inside the building?
You have two, you have one level, and then you have a down, and you, we're going down...
But is there one or two levels inside the building?
Two, two levels of parking.
Okay.
Well, there is.
One on the first floor.
One on the first floor.
Their access is different. One is from division, and one is from the public alley.
Alderman Suback?
Certainly, I don't want to have the developer incur too many costs with respect to renderings, but, you know, if you've done a project in Skokie, my guess is you're going to probably do something similar. It'd be nice to see at least the renderings of what you've done in Skokie. That would certainly help and probably not be a huge cost. Again, even, the density is going to be an issue, because it looks like you're proposing two additional curb cuts along division in addition to the existing one we have now. And if you, if you go out there at like 4:30 tomorrow, you'll see what a nightmare it is over there, and we just don't want to add that much more density to it. And I'm sure your traffic study will come back and say that there'll be absolutely no impact on traffic. We're considering, we know, we've seen those before. So, you know, if we're going from 25 residential, I think you're going to have to be in that, in my opinion, at 30 to 35 range of units.
Probably take it on Sunday.
Right.
The traffic study.
When we do our traffic study, we will have them specifically look at the density and the number of units with regard to this, and we'll also deal with staff as to what they, their perceived questions are before we proceed.
Any other comments? I think you've been able to gather the direction that you need, I hope.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, and hopefully we will be back soon.
Continuing under mayor's report, Alderman Wesley? Yes, you do.
Care to join me and the mayor? As you know, we had our Jubilee Saturday, and we had the water fights on the barrel, and we had some trophies to be awarded. Bensonville Fire Department came in third place. I'm sorry, the Chambers came in third place. Bensonville Fire Department came in, in second. And I, I really like to say the city of Wooddale, this, this team took first in this tournament. I mean, it was amazing that the mayor did the nozzle and that, so if they want to say something, that's fine, and Dave, and I just want to present you guys a trophy for first place.
You going to say something, Dave?
Dave, you always have a few words. I just want to thank Alderman Wesley. I know he did a great deal of time and effort in putting this together. He's been doing it for the last few years, and hopefully he'll do it again, so we can repeat. All right? Thank you very much.
Just real quick, I just want to make it real clear that when Alderman Wesley talked about the Bensonville Fire Department, all these guys that participated were rookies. They'd never been on the hose before, so, I mean, it would, you know, it was...
One guy was a 15-year veteran.
Okay. One, one of the gentlemen was a 15-year veteran, but the rest were, so, it was fun. It was a lot of fun.
Alderman Shockey?
Thank you. I'd just like to mention that I'd like to give our appreciation and thanks from the city of Wooddale to county board member Paul Fitner. We had a problem with speed zones on Wooddale Road going south, especially where the cabin is and where it goes down to one lane. And he was able to have the county, after a while, the county changed the speed limit so that there is no change at that point, because there are kids crossing the street to the school over there. So again, I want to thank Paul Fitner, county board member, for helping us out on that. Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Manager. No report, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any...
Is there any objections to any item on the consent agenda? Alderman Winger?
Item number four.
To take off the consent agenda, that'll be done. Any objections to any other items on the consent agenda?
Which one did she? Okay. No, that's, that's fine.
Alderman Shaki?
Item number five.
And item number five? May I have a motion to approve the agenda, being items one, two, three, and six?
So moved?
There a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda, being an ordinance amending municipal code, Chapter Six, Article Three on Garbage and Refuse, an ordinance authorizing disposal of personal property, an asphalt hot patcher owned by the city of Wooddale, approval of a thirty-five-hundred dollar payment to the DuPage Senior Citizens Council, and an ordinance amending Chapter Six of the city of Wooddale Municipal Code. Is there such a motion?
So moved?
Is there a second? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemy?
Yes.
Item one is approved as ordinance O-06-51. Item two is O-06-52, and item six is O-06-53. That brings us to item four. Is there a motion?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. That brings us to item five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemy?
Yes.
That passes. Brings us, committee chairman reports, community and economic development, Alderman Tolemy.
No report.
Finance and administration, Alderman Winger.
I have a report. The first, we are going to discuss the referendum question. However, it is my understanding that our attorney, Mr. Bond, is going to give a brief description of how we can word this if we decide to put in an incentive in this question, and if that's possible, and how to go about it.
Mr. Bond?
Sure. The, this election code and the municipal code have specific parameters relative to public questions, particularly when they come to tax questions. It has long been the, the practice that those questions must be substantially similar to, if not identical, to the questions set forth in statute. You can't add additional information, which you've got in the, one of the drafts there that indicates that what the tax can be used for, what it can't be used for, and what it will ultimately end up doing. What you can't do in the question, and you need to be cautious in how you handle it, is you can't certainly provide the voters an incentive to vote for it.